Okay. Um, opening statement. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Cluck, roll call, please.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Ms. Matiker?
Here.
Mr. She?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Here.
Mrs. White?
Here.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
Here.
Mr. Burrell Patel?
Here.
Mr. Rivera?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Opening statement. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education administrative offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 4th and March 3rd, 2022. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and the applicable state regulations. Thank you. Okay, so we have an exciting night tonight. We have our, um, uh, board member candidates to fill Ms. Budowsky's vacancy. And tonight, what we're going to do, a little housekeeping. Um, we have, uh, we have a total of, I think, four candidates present and one candidate, virtual, who has a prerecorded message. And, um, we will hear from them. They have a six-minute time limit to let us know who they are. Um, they've already submitted the board, uh, resumes and letters of intent. So we've reviewed those. And in addition, we'll listen to a six-minute presentation on why they would be the best board member. We're excited about this. We're very enthusiastic that we have some terrific candidates. Um, they are appearing in the order that we received their, um, documents. And, um, something else to note, um, we will then go to closed session. And what we'll try to do is apprise the, uh, public and those that are here of the status of, of about how long that's going to be. We, we certainly wouldn't want to keep everyone here for hours without knowing what's going on in the back that, um, what our approximate timeline is. But the most important part is that after a closed session, if we do get five votes for one candidate, what we will then do is come out into public session, um, we will nominate and vote for someone. And at that point, uh, they would get sworn in only if they're here. So we do have one candidate that's virtual. And if that candidate who is virtual with the prerecorded message, um, is the nominee, that person actually, um, you know, would get sworn in, uh, immediately following this meeting, let's say tomorrow or the next day, or, or Monday, whatever. But, uh, without further ado.
Board President?
Yes, Mr. She.
Are we allowed to ask questions to candidates?
No, we are not asking any questions. There's no Q and A. This is a six-minute presentation. And each candidate can, um, you know, give it their best shot and we'll, we'll go in the back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Purin Shah is our first candidate. Welcome, Mr. Shah.
Please, ma'am.
Thank you. I have the clock here on my desk. Again, I'll time it for six minutes. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you for the opportunity to, to come in person and speak with you all. I really want to cover three key areas. One, to share a little bit more about me, both personally and professionally. Two, the skills and capabilities that I've acquired over the years, which I believe make me a strong fit for this role and opportunity. And third, what, so share some of my perspectives on the key challenges and priorities.
Excuse me, Mr. Shah, just talking a little bit, pull the mic up a little bit.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. We want to make sure everybody hears you. I don't mean to interrupt.
No, no worries. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Shah.
And, uh, and third, just share some of my perspectives on the key priorities and challenges that the board and the town is facing today. So really jumping, jumping right into it, who am I? Really, I've been in, I've lived in Edison since 1995. I've graduated from this very building, JP Stevens, in 97, 25 years ago. So I bring that perspective as a former student from the Edison School System. I am a proud alumni, and it is personal in that sense because this really provided a platform for me, led me to attend NYU, the Stern School of Business, and a long 20, you know, successful career in corporate America for over 21 years. In addition to that view as a former student, I made that choice to return to Edison after, after college. I've, I've lived, I've been a longtime resident. I've decided to raise my family here. I have two young daughters in the Edison School System today. I'm a proud father of a third grader and a kindergartner. So I also have the view of the lens through my, through my two girls in terms of what experiences are they, are they going through in school today? What challenges do they, do they see? What are some opportunities for improvement? And so I'm invested as both as a former student, a proud alumni, and a, and a father. Make sure that my, my kids, along with everyone, all nearly 17,000 students of Edison Township, have a strong experience here, this generation and the next generation. So in addition to that, why do I feel that I'm a strong fit? What skills do I bring in? As I mentioned, I've been working in corporate America for 21-plus years and I continue to do. I'm currently running a program management team focused on strategy initiatives at BNY Mellon. What does that really entail? Nuts and bolts is I oversee a portfolio of initiatives, projects, programs. What is the team focused on across regions? If it, it really is, what are the challenges, the issues that we face at, from a business perspective? What are, what, based on those issues, what is, what is the root cause? What is the impact? What are those opportunities for improvement? Can we outline short-term tactical plans while also thinking more longer term strategically? That's really the, the view. Can we go through solutions and options? Weigh the pros and cons, the benefits, the return on investment, the risks, and then make an educated decision? And that's really the mindset that I bring. My mindset and approach is really in a collaborative manner. I, I really would have, I come in open-minded. I don't come in with any preconceived notions that is only one way. It's really about understanding all of the options on the table. What are, what, what are the pros and cons? And looking at the data and trying to make the most educated recommendation decision. That's really my style and approach. It's really collaborative, consensus building, and I think that's what would work well with, with, with a, with the board. In addition to that, it's not only about identifying solutions and building plans. We have to execute those plans. And that's also comes in my day job. Building out that time, building out those timelines, those, those roadmaps. How do we execute it? Over what time period? What are, what are the tollgates? What do we need to monitor? How do we oversee the execution? What metrics do we put in? What monitoring mechanisms do we put in? This is all, these are all skills and capabilities that I would bring to the table and to the board. And then, along with that, my na, my natural background is I, I only have one way. It's honesty and transparency and communication. That's the only way I know how to operate. I really don't know any other way. As I said, I've, I've worked 21 years. My key message is I'm going to be transparent. Of course, there are some things that are privileged and confidential, but outside of that, if the answer is, I don't know, I don't know, but we're going to figure out a solution, an approach to identify what, what, what potential options are there? Working with different people, different stakeholders, getting input, and trying to make the best decision. Because this is not a decision for, for me. It's really for the students of Edison, this generation and the next generation. And that's, it's, it's an opportunity to volunteer, to leverage my capabilities and skillsets, and really apply that back to the community. And that's really why I'm here. Now, on, on the challenges and my perspective, now, of course, the last past two years have been more geared toward COVID and coming out of the pandemic. But in parallel, while I may not have been actively involved, I'm quite aware of a lot of the challenges that the board has faced. And I do, I mean, to be perfectly honest, how did I even know there was a vacancy? I saw the vacancy on the board website. I went in to read the minutes, and I do that pretty regularly, to see what, what, what agenda topics are happening, what, what's actually being discussed and decided. And that's where I saw the vacancy occurred. There was no other purpose. And I thought, this is an opportunity coming out of the pandemic and the flexibility now I do have in my career, where I, I can apply and hopefully give back to the community and, and, and help. So what, I think there's no secret what the number one challenge likely is around overcrowding facilities. And I don't have the answers by any means. I've, but I also am very well informed in the sense, I see what other townships are doing as well. Couple of months ago, Hoboken announced a major expansion. West Windsor's been doing a number of things over the past few years. If you even go back 10, 15 years and what Montgomery's done. Now, these are only pure, a small sample size. I saw, I, I also read, of course, the, the options that were presented in the December board meeting around, around JP and expansion. And I think, again, not being close to the information, specific intimate details, I wouldn't take a position on one way or the other. Again, going back to it, it's really about understanding all the potential options and working with the board, trying to build consensus on what is the right path forward. Because it's, it's really, again, as I mentioned, I'm an invested parent. It's for my, for my children, their friends, and the, and the next generation of students. This is where it's really going to make an impact. So lastly, um, so very, very quickly, there's a couple of key things I would just want to mention. Overcrowded also touches a lot of things, the intersections, the curriculum and the challenges that we have. I'll mention very, the bio lab ish, concerns around these. That's an experience, the student experience. It touches the cafeteria in terms of how students don't have, have less than five minutes to eat because they're waiting on long lines to pick up food. That, that touches the student experience and the, we do a great job about providing nutritious meals, but if we don't give them the opportunity to digest those meals, are we, are we actually missing, missing the real challenge here? And I know I'm burning low on time.
Yeah, if you could wrap it up, Mr. Shah.
Yes.
Thank you.
So.
Very briefly.
Very briefly, to recap, I really, I think, in my, in my humble opinion, I'm invested in this community. I've been here over 27 years. I've graduated from JP Stevens. I bring the skillsets I spoke to earlier. And I really, my, my sole purpose is to volunteer and help the generation of students at Edison today and the next generation. So I thank the board for their time and consideration, and I thank the Edison community who are in person and who are watching on the live stream. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Shah. Thank you so much. That was an excellent, excellent time. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Cox is our next candidate on, uh, remote? Yes? Okay. This, just to introduce this, this is Mr., this is Mr. Gabriel Haller.
Good evening to the members of Edison Board of Education and the general public here today. My name is Gabriel Haller, and I'm a resident of Edison. I've applied to fill the vacancy to board member, Mrs. Carol Budowsky, and I'm truly interested in making a difference in our schools. I apologize for not being present at this evening's board meeting. Today is actually the Jewish holiday of Purim, and I will most likely be dressed in a Toy Story costume at a festival meal with friends and family at the time this recording is presented. Even though I cannot be in person this evening, I am confident that my extensive clinical skills, working in the New Jersey public school system, and my critical thinking, problem solving, and collaborative approach would make me an excellent candidate for this position. As many of you know, I was a candidate for the Edison School Board during the November 2021 elections. For those who may be unfamiliar with me, or may have already drawn conclusions about me, I would like the chance to introduce myself to you again. I am an average, honest, and hardworking citizen of this township who was invested in making my home a better place to live and raise a family in. I've been an active and valued member in our community for many years, assisting parents with special education and advocacy needs, volunteering my time in various capacities, and fundraising for community members in need. I am truly blessed to live in Edison, and I want to ensure that our school system continues to foster the same feelings for others. As a pediatric occupational therapist, I have been privileged to work in the New Jersey public school system since the fall of 2017. In my capacity as a school therapist, I work with students of different needs to assist them with accessing the educational environment as independently as possible. One of the highlights of my job is collaborating with a team of educators, parents, and administrators to face challenges through open discussion, thorough planning, and detailed execution. All districts have challenges, and I know that I can apply these strategies that I've learned to enhance the Edison School Board. My current position working in a school provides me with additional insight and perspective for addressing challenges realistically and innovatively so that the Edison schools continue to shine bright. The COVID-19 pandemic posed a, a challenge to the entire educational system. Teachers, administrators, students, and parents alike faced a complete unnerving and chaotic experience, fumbling over Zoom meetings while attempting to balance the overlapping home and work life. I experienced it too, and it was definitely not easy. Fortunately though, that seems to be behind us. During that time, however, a spotlight was shown on the gaps in the public school system that must be addressed. Many districts struggled with parents and students' needs going unmet. Budgets went unchecked, politics seeped in, and special interests infiltrated the school administrators. I decided to become more involved as I began to witness the fallout in the newfound attention to school boards and began advocating for parents and teachers alike. I found myself uniquely positioned to bridge the gap between these groups with differing interests. As such, I believe I am uniquely qualified to serve on Edison School Board and look forward to working collaboratively as part of a team to advance our schools and improve the relationship between the residents of our town and members of this board. In closing, I believe that my commitment to collaborative problem solving grounded in a realistic approach would make me a positive addition to the Edison School Board. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. Have a good evening.
Excellent. Okay, that, again, that was Mr. Gabriel Haller. Next we have here, Dr. Kevin Haydock.
Good evening, Dr. Breagan, members of the Edison Board of Education and members of the community. Thank you for this opportunity to address you this evening. Let me begin by sharing my philosophy of education as it relates entirely to my views on education and my expected responsibility as an Edison Board of Education member. It will give you a quick glimpse of the character and qualifications as an educator, mentor, coach, and resident of Edison. As one generation after another inscribes their place in history, there are countless traditions, values, and lessons that are learned. One of the utmost essential lessons that the current generation has learned from the others' past mistakes is that a formal education is the key to a successful future. The young generations of people living in this world are faced with a tremendous amount of pressure that leads directly back to the classrooms. The children today need to be more prepared, more than ever, to face a world that becomes progressively more challenging every day. Without the appropriate leaders, role models, and optimistic adults in the school and serving on this board of education, our future leaders will be unprepared to face a changing and very challenging world. My name is Dr. Kevin Haydock. As Board President Schneider just mentioned, I'm an educator, mentor, coach, husband, and most importantly, a father. Over 15 years ago, I made the choice to move to Edison. During that 15 years, I have had multiple opportunities to move out of this town and into different towns and change careers. I chose not to do that. Actually, I, when I got married, I moved to Oliver Avenue and most recently moved to Mulberry Lane to build, uh, to provide my family for a forever home. We are very happy with this purchase and plan to stay forever. I grew up in South Plainfield and attended the public schools until I graduated. Upon graduating, I received my bachelor's degree in special education and elementary education from East Strasburg University. Later, I got my master's in technology from Jersey City, and then I went to Seton Hall and received my educational specialist and educational doctorate in educational leadership, management, and policy. Go Pirates! This educational background has taught me the value of education. It has provided me with a mature scope of expectations for myself, my children, and those around me. This educational background will strengthen the dialogue and hold this school district accountable for making tough decisions that align to putting our children of Edison first, making them the center of every single decision, and solidifying the policies and procedures that create an atmosphere of learning in every single school. As a former special education teacher for eight years, I have the proven knowledge and experience to ensure that my decisions on the board will include those individuals with disabilities. The policies and procedures that govern all students must be followed, they must be aligned to best practices, and most importantly, they must be good for kids. As a former middle school and a current elementary school principal, I've experienced many situations that would certainly produce a bestselling book. I believe most school administrators would say the same thing. The high expectations I have for the students and staff I work with will help to improve the policies within the Edison School District so that every child has the opportunity to be successful despite their race, gender, or disability. With a safe place to learn that is supported in every school by highly qualified staff, our students will reap the benefits of the decisions as a board member. I would expect to be held accountable for this belief as a board member. An ethical individual like myself never shies away from being held accountable for the decisions I make. My educational experience has evolved in, in the past 22 years. Schools are no longer the valued place they, of learning they once were. We are stronger, more technologically dependent, and more diverse than ever. I applaud Governor Murphy's most recent commitment to public education as evidenced by his support of 2023 budget proposal. This commit, commitment will assist our schools, specifically here in Edison, with evaluating the options we have for overcrowding, curriculum improvements, and facility updates. As a school administrator for 14 years, I have attended most board of education meetings in South Plainfield and here in Edison, either in person or virtually. I have watched, I have learned, and I have listened. As a resident of this great town of Edison, I have watched the debate over full-day kindergarten unfold at these meetings year after year. My family was personally impacted by this lack of full-day kindergarten program for many years. Unfortunately, for my family and for many other children of Edison, we had to choose a different path for our children. As an educator, it was always disappointing that the value of this program could not be determined prior to my children beginning school. I have noticed a void most recently on the board in the area of policy and special education. I plan to fill this void as a proven specialist in these two areas. I hold a doctorate in the area of policy from Seton Hall, and I have an advanced degree and decades of experience in a grade level, in all grade levels of special education. As another school year quickly nears an end, there are pertinent decisions that this board must make. The decisions that the Board of Education makes doesn't only benefit the students today. These decisions impact the, the direction of our schools and our students for decades to come. A continued focus on mental health issues and how they can impact the academic performance and success of our students is a crucial, is crucial during this time. As we should be, all be aware, poor mental health conditions contribute to the lack of motivation and problems focusing, which can lead to failing grades. My contributions as a board member will focus on mental health resources for students, which could be the key to their academic success in our schools. My responsibilities as a school leader for 14 years has taken me down the, down the road to have opportunities working with budget figures, support of superintendent's missions, and manage, uh, manage compliance within the school district in the area of special education, harassment, intimidation, bullying, and grievance procedures. Thank you for this opportunity to address the board this evening. I wish all candidates good luck tonight, and I look forward to serving this town and using my experiences to improve the, the board and support our students and staff for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Haydock. Next we have, um, Mr. Menesh Patel. Good evening, Mr. Patel. I have the clock with me. You have six minutes, and I'll let you know if you go a little longer, it's okay, if you have to complete a thought.
I'll try to finish it before six.
I'll give you the signal, okay? Thank you, Mr. Patel. The floor is yours.
All right, sir. Uh, thank you very much to the board, to the community. I have been working with the community of all kinds since I was 13. I started in Gujati community, went on to others. Since 2003, I've been working with Edison Township. My kids went through every school on this side of the township. So I know where the problem starts and where it ends. Since last few years, I have noticed, one after the other, there's events that's happening, and the board's not paying attention. So I start talking to Mr. Jerry Shee and all the rest of it, and we see where we could go from here. You guys doing a great job, sir. I had a pleasure working with three of you, Mr. Snyder, Burrell Patel, and Brian for your election. It was a pleasure getting you guys there, and I, you're doing a great job for last few months. But we still need a lot of work to do. Kids need equipment, kids need books, kids need a lot of stuff. Whenever you guys making decisions, sometime it's partnership, sometime it's not happening in partnership. And I would like to be part of that team where we make it for the kids. I'm here for the kids. I just recently realized that we are parachuting candidates into our board, and that's not right. That's when I decided I should throw a towel in and let's see what we could do. Over the last six months, I realized that Edison Township Board and the people are against each other. There is issues that need to be solved, there is somebody who needs to be out of the board to be in, with the community, and trying to ease instead of they cursing at us and we're cursing at them. And that's what I would like to do, as I spoke to Dr. Breagan when I met him a few months back, that we need to ease the pain between the parents and the board. And that's what I would like to come in as a board member and try to do. Election comes and goes, but at the end of the day, we need to keep kids in mind. That's what we are elected here for, and that's what we should do. Over the years, I realize we have lots of funds available at the end of the year, and still kids not getting what they need to do their job when we send them out for athletics, music, or any other projects that we do in school. So I would like all of your support and help me appoint to this position so that I could help my 240 music kids, and I believe there is about 190 athletic kids who are looking at me and saying, Uncle, good luck to you tonight. And I was like, let me get in there first, then I'll help you out. I can't do it until I get there. So I'm looking for your support, especially Doug, yours, because you and I see eye to eye on most cases. And same thing for Brian and Burrell. Mohan is one of them who I went head-on collision quite a few times, and that's all for the kids. Jerry, if I'm there, it'll be a pleasure to work with you. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Menesh Patel. Again, this is Mr. Brett Baker. I have the clock here, Mr. Baker. I'll start it when you're ready, and I'll give you a little signal when you hit the six, but you could wrap up any thoughts, no pressure.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, Dr. Breagan, Board President Schneider, Vice President Matiker, Edison Board of Education members, and student staff, parents, and residents of the Edison Township Public School System. My name is, as President Schneider said, Brett Baker, and I'm seeking appointment for the board vacancy created by the resignation of Mrs. Carol Budowsky. My path, passion, and love for education was unexpected, but I'm wildly grateful for the journey and want to share that with you. In 2008, I moved to Michi, I moved from Michigan to New Jersey as a member of the Teach for America Greater Newark Corps, where I taught, if you can believe it, kindergarten in second grade for two years. After supporting the daily operations of my school through field trip planning, budgeting, and day-to-day system support, I was selected for a highly selective fellowship to open and co-found North Star Academy's second elementary school, Westside Park Elementary School. As the founding director of operations and throughout the rest of my career, I was and currently am the school leader responsible for all things operations: budget, strategic planning, people management systems, finance facilities, human resources, and day-to-day systems, just to name a few of the domains I've been responsible for. Transportation, that's me. Student enrollment, also me. And I've leveraged these skills to support other schools and refining their systems to support student academic outcomes. In 2015, I married my beautiful wife, Sona, and we moved to Denver, where I was the network director of operations for a small charter school, where my charge was to lead the flagship school while also simultaneously building out the operations, systems, and tools for running both their flagship school as well as a new school we were preparing to open. I helped lead the strategic planning for how to build a strong student, staff, and family culture across two schools while also ensuring an equitable and equal experience across both schools. At the end of that school year, we made the difficult decision to move back to the great state of New Jersey to be closer to family, and I joined a network of schools in Brooklyn called Coney Island Prep as their chief operating officer, before I moved on to launch the nonprofit and education practice group at First Fidelity Brokerage, focused on providing risk management insurance and consulting schools for schools and nonprofits. I have now spent the last four years as the director of campus operations. I have now spent the last four years as the director of campus operations at KIP Newark's Team Academy. So why did I just tell you my life story? Because I think I've got a unique set of abilities and experiences that complement the current board's expertise and help enhance it. Because my public administration and public policy background has prepared me to serve the governance role that a board of education member serves, and because I have been, at one time or another, or currently, have been all six possible constituencies that the Edison Public School System supports: a resident, a school-level leader, a district-level leader, a teacher, vendor, and a parent. The only thing I haven't been is a student, and that's just because my parents were born and raised in Michigan. I'm a school-level leader, having led schools in one way or another for almost 14 years. I've been a district-level leader, having led a network of public charter schools twice, focused on strategic planning, financial modeling, and long-term growth and sustainability. I've been a teacher, blessed with firsthand knowledge of the remarkable work that educators across our nation and those sitting in this room, including those in the Edison Public Schools District, and I would be remiss if I didn't use this time to acknowledge the hard work, dedication, and passion of these educators at this time. And by educators, I mean the teachers, the support staff, and the front office staff and administration. It has been a hard year, and I know firsthand what it has taken. I've been a vendor supporting schools, gaining a nuanced lens into how schools and vendors interact, and that sort of Venn diagram of how do we each advocate for our needs, all in the interest of the best for kids, and have sat on both sides of those tables. But the thing I'm most proud about is that I'm a proud resident of Edison and a parent of future Edison students. And since the last time I stood before this body in this room and shared I was the parent of a two-and-a-half-year-old, I am proud to share that I am the parent of a three-and-a-half-year-old, turns out they do get older, and a three-month-old, who are both future James Monroe Owls, Herbert Hoover Hornets, and Edison High School Eagles. Their future as students in our schools is guided by the hard work of my wife and I, but also Edison's educators and the leadership of Edison's administration and board of education. And I'm overjoyed when I woke up about a month ago to find out that full-day kindergarten was coming back. My background in public administration and public policy has given me a strategic mind that is able to take a problem, break it down into its component parts, identify the highest-lever solution, and develop an action plan to effectuate those solutions and solve the problem at hand. I'm an experienced budget manager, having written over 10 school and district budgets and led monthly and quarterly analysis of those budgets. I'm a veteran project manager, including CapEx and long-term facility planning and construction management. I know how to manage projects from the tiniest installation of some chairs in an auditorium to multimillion-dollar school construction projects, and would leverage those skills and experience to support the district the best way I can. I'm a team leader and collaborator, able to find common ground amongst all walks of life, experience, and beliefs with one goal in mind: empathy. I fundamentally, to my core, believe that if we are able to understand and share the feelings of another, regardless of differing opinions, we're able to find solutions and pass forward that work for everyone, including our kids. Lastly, and I don't share this looking for sympathy, but I understand the mental health concerns facing our students, educators, and families, both pre- and post-pandemic. As someone who has struggled with anxiety and depression for most of my life, I know what it's like to work with both of those mental health diseases, and know that it's a priority of this district to support the social and emotional health of our students, staff, and families, and I would work with the administration to provide my personal experience to support planning in ways that best support our students, staff, and families. I'm grateful and humbled for the time this evening, and I look forward to possibly working with each of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Baker. Great speech, thank you. And next, we have Mr. Malakai White. Good evening, Mr. White. I'll set my clock here for six minutes. I'll give you a signal once it gets to six, and then, you know, wrap up your thoughts.
Sounds good, sounds good.
All right, thank you very much. Welcome here.
Thank you. Greetings, everyone. Greetings, board. Dr. Bragan, my name is Malakai White, and I'm currently a student at Raritan Valley Community College in Branchburg, New Jersey. I'm studying to get my degree in business marketing. I'm also a member of the Unity Unleashed Group and the Lena Harris Foundation, where I have taken a part in numerous acts of community service, such as clothing drives, food drives, and most recently, I've become a mentor in the Lena Harris Foundation Mentorship Program. And on top of all of that, I've been a resident of this great township of Edison for seven years, going on eight years. And just flashback to seven years ago, I remember my parents grabbed me and my three other siblings and sat us down on a couch in our living room in Plainfield, New Jersey, and they told us that essentially they were about to move us to a township that could offer better educational opportunities and to secure our future. And little did I know at that time just how much my life was about to change and how much my purpose was gonna make itself evident to me. I remember just being a seventh grader walking the hallways of Herbert Hoover Middle School and just being embraced by my peers and the teachers, my coaches, my principal, and they embraced me and made me feel like I could contribute to this community. And it meant a lot to me because they, when they looked at me, they didn't see the picture that society painted. They looked at me and they saw somebody with a future and somebody that could contribute to not just this community, but other communities. And that's why I'm standing right here today to give back to the same community that has poured so much into me. Now, this isn't my first time speaking here at this podium in this auditorium. I don't know if anybody remembers, but two years ago, my principal, Mr. Ross, had me here on an assignment to answer the also-famous question, what's great about EHS? And I can answer that right now, but it would take another six minutes, and Dr. Bragan wouldn't like that. So, but that was January 2020. Now, little did I know, or did anybody know, just how much the world was gonna change in just two more months. I remember being a senior, and at the time when I was here, I was president of general student council, president of the student body at Edison High School, and I was at a student council meeting, and my advisor was pretty much saying, hey, you're not gonna come, we're not coming to school for the next two weeks. That two weeks turned into a month, that month turned into three months, and then pretty much I lost my senior year. And I remember it was just so challenging being online. I saw as the weeks went by, my discipline and my will to get the most out of my education started to atrophy, and I was so confused, I was so restless with my education, and I just, at the time, it took so much for me to work back and to be here in my second year of college and actually being better than I was before. But it got me thinking, could you guys imagine just how restless these kids were? Kids that were younger than me. I'm talking about, I was in my last year of high school, struggling. Kids who were, now, had this been years ago, when I was trying to make the transition from Plainfield to Edison, only God knows who I'd be today. But kids who were trying to transition from elementary school to middle school, middle school to high school, had to fight through this and are still fighting through this restlessness. And also, I am the son of two teachers, so I get to hear from my parents quite often just how hard it's been for them to reach the kids and to motivate them, and this new generation of kids, and especially post-pandemic, things like that, it's just, they've been struggling to reach the kids. So I could sympathize with the teachers, because those are also, those teachers here that have took my hand and have guided me down this path, I could sympathize with them, because a lot of them have the right intentions and are trying to reach the kids, but it's just been so hard, because the kids have, are restless at this moment. So I say all that to say this, God willing, as the next board member, I would hope to be the bridge, to bridge the gap, this growing divide between staff and students, and to represent the student body, but to also sympathize with the teachers as well, and to strategize and figure out ways in which we could change with the times and get the kids to buy into the educational system and also to help the teachers out as well. And also, there are many other issues, but I would just hope to be able to represent the younger generation. I'm kinda in the middle of the new generation of teachers and then the new generation of students. I'm right there in the middle, or as some people would say, the middle child, so I would like to help out in that area. But just to close out, I have a quote that pretty much summarizes my experience here in Edison, and it's by the great Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and this is about education. And he says, "The function of education is to teach one to think intensely and to think critically. Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education." And just speaking on my experience here in Edison, I feel like anything less than true education falls short of excellence. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. White. Great, great job. Okay, we're now going to move to adjourn to a privileged session. Ms. Cluck, would you like to read that resolution?
Whereas, Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Edison, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey as follows. The public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows. Attorney-client privileged discussion regarding board member candidates only. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matter shall be made public at such time as the need for non-disclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to privileged session. Do I have a second?
Motion.
Mr. Mohan Patel, second. Roll call.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays?
Thank you.
Motion passes.
We'll be back. Okay, motion to reconvene to open session. I make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Mattiker, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Any nays.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So we came out of closed session, and we do not have an appointment tonight. We find this to be a very valuable experience. Our board really values the opportunity to go into closed session. We expect all of the information, we all agreed, all of the information that was shared in closed session tonight will remain in closed session, and we will reconvene into a closed session on Tuesday. And at that point, we hope to resolve the matter that we tried to resolve tonight. However, you know, like I said, the board takes this whole exercise very, very seriously, and we thank all of the candidates for their effort tonight. We are very, very impressed, which of course makes it, you know, a little bit more difficult. So thank you to everyone, and we hope to have an answer on a new board member come next week. Thank you. We're now going to move to, let's see, we're gonna skip that stuff, so now we're on resolutions. We have the president's report. The only thing I wanted to mention is that we do have our committee, the whole facilities meeting, the legal ad will go out tomorrow, that's going to be Wednesday, March 30th, it's going to be at 6 o'clock. And we look forward to, Dr. Bragan will be presenting some facility and overcrowding solutions. So that's gonna be a very exciting meeting, and we look forward to hearing all about it. Again, that's gonna be March 30th at the Ed Center. Without further ado, let's go to resolutions, please. Dr. Bragan?
Great. Thank you, Board President. First resolution up is recognizing National Autism Awareness Month as April 2022. If the board president permits, I'd like to read this resolution, if that's okay.
Yes, Dr. Bragan.
Whereas, April has been designated National Autism Awareness Month by the Autism Society of America, and autism spectrum disorders are a group of developmental disabilities that contribute to lifelong social, communication, and behavioral challenges. And autism is the fastest-growing developmental disability in the world, and autism recognizes no culture, ethnic, or socioeconomic boundaries, and each student with autism has a complex and distinct profile. And the goal of the National Autism Awareness Month is to provide an opportunity for all concerned parties to educate the public about autism and issues within the autism community. And every student with autism is a unique learner, and the Public Schools of Edison Township reaffirms its commitment to tailor instruction to meet the learning needs of each student, and the Public Schools of Edison Township will provide all students with autism the respect, encouragement, and opportunities they need to build the knowledge, skills, and attitudes to be successful contributing members of adult society. And the Public Schools of Edison Township recognize that strong and collaborative efforts along, among families, schools, and community organizations are the foundations upon which success for students with autism are built. Now therefore be it resolved that the Edison Township Board of Education continues to pledge its support to the energy and efforts of staff, family, and community members who seek to ensure learning and success for all of our students with autism spectrum disorders. And that'll be on a resolution for approval at Tuesday's meeting. Along with that, we have curriculum instruction reports, we have the approval of the high school program of studies for the 2022-2023 school year. We also have approval of the grouping procedures for the 2020-2023 school year. We have the testing schedule for the New Jersey Student Learnings Assessment, as well as the New Jersey Graduation Proficient Assessment, some of which have already began, I believe, this week on the 14th. Approval of our field trips for our students, professional development activities beginning in March and running through June, and our pupil special services report, which is our added district placements, the updates for this month, the students that transferred into new programs, going to other programs, all in accordance with their IEP needs. That's all I have, Mr. Board President.
Thank you very much. The finance reports, Ms. Cluck.
Okay, for finance, we have the approval of the minutes from February 2022's Caucus on Public Meetings. We have the investment report, the report of the board secretary, and included in the finance resolutions are the transfer of funds. We have three different grants for submission and approval. We have the award of the Lincoln Elementary School kitchen bid, the award of the HVAC upgrades at the various schools, the award of the auditorium upgrades at Edison High School bid. We have the co-op purchase for the Edison High School gym floor replacement, and we have the agreement with the coordinate transportation services for SEESC, and then participation in the Mercer County pricing system, non-public school security and technology, obsolete items, ratification of the electronic transfers for our self-funded medical and prescription and bills list. The last, the final one is our transportation report, and that concludes the finance reports.
Thank you very much. Board members, open discussion. Let's see, this is the first time that I've had a one-tiered layout. This is very exciting, so I could see everyone, which is nice. Mr. Beryl Patel, I'd like to start on that side, if you have anything to add to our board member open discussion.
Not today, I have a bunch of items for Tuesday. I'll speak on Tuesday.
Everyone should be excited about our presentation on Tuesday, correct?
Absolutely. Looking forward to it.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Patel. Mr. Mohan Patel? Okay, Ms. Peng.
Yeah, Dr. Bragan, I have a question about the grouping procedure. I only see the high school grouping procedure here in the document. Do we have it for middle school too, or it's not? I'm just missing my package.
Yeah, it looks like that's all that's included. We'll get that for you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Ms. Peng?
No, that's it.
Mr. Mohan Patel.
Yes, actually, Board President, for our Tuesday meeting, can we find out what we're doing with JP Stevens High School updates in regards to the construction, what we want to do with the school here? Or are we gonna leave it for the next generation to figure it out?
What about Tuesday's meeting? This Tuesday?
So we had our public meeting in regards to all the things that are going on with the parking lots and the roofs and everything.
Right.
Are we doing any updates to JP Stevens, or are we gonna just kick it to the future for someone else to think about? Are we gonna put a new school? What is the plan? Do we leave the school the way it is, continue to denigrate the way it has, or do you continue with your plan of building a new school?
I can't speak for any plans of building a new school, however, I could tell you that March 30th, which is what I just announced, Dr. Bragan is going to be presenting a infrastructure plan, I hope, because there seems to be pretty much a unanimous sentiment that JP Stevens needs more classrooms. So I would hope that that's part of what So I would hope that that's part of what Dr. Bragan is going to present, but that will be in public on March thirtieth.
Thank you.
Please feel free to email Dr. Bragan with any specific suggestions before that. So this way, if there's any ideas leading up to that, we all, the whole board, actually, if you have any specifics in terms of ideas, you should definitely reach out to Dr. Bragan before he puts this presentation together.
Oh, Doug.
Ms. Peng, yes.
Yeah, about the grouping procedure, this is a question for the Curriculum and Technology Committee. Besides the missing grouping procedure for middle school, we would really like to see the change that's marked on this grouping procedure from the current year. If there's no change there, then obviously there's no mark, but if there is any change, can they highlight the changes? So for, just for every board member's convenience, this is easy to see, and for also, mostly for the parents and students to see what are the, what are the changes from previous years.
Sure, I think that that would make a lot of sense. Can we make sure we mark any changes, if any?
And also, this is the, so this version that we're receiving in the package, is the version recommended by the curriculum committee?
Ms. Peng, my understanding is that there's no changes.
Okay, and this, for middle school too?
I didn't see the middle school. I only was privy to the high school.
Okay, so the middle school was not reviewed, the grouping procedure was not reviewed by the committee?
I did not see the middle school.
I don't, I don't believe there's any changes.
For middle school? Just want to make sure, double check.
But we will double check.
We'll email the full board tomorrow, the middle school.
Can I just add something? So this, only this was brought by the administration at the committee, and the middle school was not brought by the administration. So whenever that is brought by the administration, we will have it at a board meeting.
Any other questions, Ms. Peng?
No, no, that's all for now.
Okay. Ms. Mattiger?
None at this time, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rivera?
First of all, I just want to say thank you for everybody coming out today, the candidates. You all did a phenomenal job. I was very impressed with all of yous. So I do want to say on behalf of the Board of Education, thank you for coming out. There was some quality out there that we saw, and again, it was difficult to decipher who, because you guys did a phenomenal job. So again, I wanted to commend you guys for your efforts and commend you for wanting to be a part of the Board of Education. And again, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Shi?
Yeah, I just want to echo, you know, Brian said, you guys all did very well, and, you know, it's a tough decision. Otherwise, we would have come out with a candidate already. So, you know, just thank you guys for coming out. As far as the agenda goes, I'm looking at the meeting minutes for our public meeting. I'm just looking at the curriculum committee report. Again, you know, this is pretty simple. I would like to suggest that can we add the report from Gail, Mrs. Polakowski, sent to all the board of that meeting, because that's a very comprehensive meeting summary of that committee, and a lot of the detailed things has been shared with the board, and I hope that, I'm pretty sure a lot of the parents will be also interested. So I would like to propose amend this agenda to add Mrs. Polakowski's meeting summary to the curriculum committee.
We could look at that. I don't know what the previous procedures were. Admittedly, I wouldn't know how it was done in the past. I'm sure that everyone's intention is to make sure that any information that's asked for is given. So I think, Mr. Rivera, as chairperson, you could work with Ms. Polakowski and make sure that the minutes are as com-
I learned my lesson from the last filling out the form, that the form will be filled out much better.
Well, we're going to talk about forms and everything, but in general, what we want to make sure is that if there's any questions or information that is lacking, we make sure that we get it, not only to you as a board member, but the public.
Yeah, because I think if we just go back, look for the email from Mrs. Polakowski, I think the next day after our meeting, she sent a very detailed summary. That was very, very helpful to me. So that's why this suggestion is.
Okay, we'll look at it, and Mr. Rivera, please work, you know, yeah, thank you.
The other thing is, Brian was with me yesterday at Lincoln High School. They had their third grade, yeah, third grade, yeah, third grade math night. Great turnout. I think, I would say probably half of the third graders showed up. The highlight of that is they were doing multiplication right now, so all the games and stuff was all about multiplications. And I hope you agree with me that the dinner they prepared for the kids and the parents were very tasty. I didn't get a chance to eat, but they looked very, very nice and, you know, very fresh.
The entire event was phenomenal, and I was able to see three different things yesterday. I visited the ESL classes as well. I'm glad our parents are taking advantage of those courses that the district's offering. And I also went to Lincoln yesterday for pajama reading, and I want to commend that school as well. They had five hundred and eighty families come out for their first event for this year in person. So I want to commend both schools, their staff, they did a phenomenal job, and it made me be, it was, I felt very proud being a Board of Education member walking those schools yesterday.
Yeah, the other thing, you know, these teachers, the third grader teacher and some other teachers, they volunteered their time for the night. And I have to give a shout out to Jan Fisher, the assistant principal. She dragged her sister over to the school, and her sister was the mascot, the tiger, the tiger. So that made that event very, very fun. Just kudos to the staff and the leadership over there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shi. Mrs. White?
Okay, I, we, this month is Read Across America, so all of us have been going from school to school to school, and it's just been such a great experience. Last year, we had to do everything virtual. This year, we're able to do it in person, and it just, it's just so different. So if anybody ever does get the opportunity, please take advantage of it. It's a really, really nice thing. The other thing is, it's also Art Month, and if you have the opportunity to visit the municipal building on the third floor, they have a fantastic display there, and it's all, you know, Edison High and middle school, you know, they did a really, really good job. And that was Allison Palelo. She's at J. P. Stevens here, and she's their art director, teacher here, so. But try and get out to see it. They're so talented. It's worth the trip. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Ms. Mattiger, something?
Sorry, I should have said this before. I just want to thank everyone who came out for this position to speak today, and, you know, thank you for making that effort. Just, I just want to say that many, many, many years ago, I also applied for such a position. I was right there, you know, trying to get appointed. I did not get appointed, but it was a wonderful experience, and I stayed engaged ever since that day. So please, continue to stay engaged. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just had a couple things. First of all, what people, what certainly I didn't understand until I was on the board is so much of the work is done behind the scenes and not in public view and everything like that. We're, we're in these committees, and this month was really great. Every time I left a committee meeting, I felt the board was really moving the ball forward and really doing great things for the children here in Edison. And we've, we've, we had a lot of productive meetings. I think that you'll hear a lot about that on Tuesday night when we do our committee reports, so I'm very excited about that. And, you know, I have to say, well, to echo everybody's comments, Mr. Shi, Mr. Rivera, everybody, that the candidates tonight were just fantastic, which obviously makes our life a little bit harder. And finally, Read Across America. So with all this work being done behind the scenes, with all this type of work as well, it was just so cool to get to the elementary schools and walk in and really like, you know, you know, you walk in and they have, you know, I don't know if anybody knows this, but like, you're like an honored guest at these places. So they got, some places have donuts and coffee, and some places have bottles of water. It's just like you're, they're hosting you to read books to the children, and then, but then when you get in the classroom, it's just so awesome, because a guy like me, I don't get to go to elementary school classes very often, and it really reminds you of why you're doing this, and the effect that the board has on how we can collectively achieve the common goal of making sure that the students have a great environment to learn in. So it was really special, all of the building principals and staff and reading specialists, everybody. It was really a fantastic week, two weeks, actually. So anyway, that being said, yes.
Oh, so I just, I'm sorry, all my, you know, I'm not-
You have to write this stuff down and consolidate your notes.
So I also, I visited six elementary schools over the past two weeks, and it was just phenomenal. Kids were amazing, teachers were amazing, you know, it's such a grand welcome everywhere. And, you know, it's so nice when kids, students come and ask you these really nice questions about the stories and this and that, but my favorite was when one kid raised, you know, his hand and asked me when my birthday was. And so that was, that was really special, and, you know, them saying that, you know, we're going to email you to wish you a very happy birthday. So I think everyone should use this opportunity to go to different schools and, you know, see the children. I was also there at the pajama night yesterday at Lincoln School with Brian and Beryl, and that was also phenomenal, great event. So just, I'm not going to take any more time, that's all.
Good, thank you very much.
Mr. President, I would like to-
Yes.
All right, so, since everyone opened the Pandora's Box of Read Across America, I really had inspired from Mrs. Budowsky here. I really had written down quite a few wonderful things about Read Across America. I was going to read on Tuesday, so that you, Mrs. Budowsky, can come into our meeting and listen again, but I would please ask you to come back again on Tuesday. But while we are on the topic, Read Across America is, like you said, it's our payback for the volunteer services that we do for our Board of Education, right? It's one of the best things a board member can ever engage into. I read at every single elementary school of Edison, more than one classes. I came, read to almost more than four hundred students of this wonderful school system, all the grades, starting from kindergarten till fifth grade. This is one of the most phenomenal experiences one can ever have, especially equating to what, you know, Mrs. White said. Last year, we were all virtual. Seeing the students in person is just a feeling of, I cannot even describe in the words. When we go to the schools, see the children, watch the different hallways of the school, there are some schools which have beautiful hallways, beautiful lightings, and very good amenities, and there are some schools which have facilities that need quite some improvement. It not only reminds us the work we have to do over here as a board member this year, and I will reach, I'll touch base about that again on Tuesday, when we cover, you know, budget and other aspects, and on March thirtieth, hopefully, as well. It reminds us what we are supposed to do, what the children do every day in the school. I have so many stories to tell about that. I can, we can be here all night long, but one of the example that happened in, in school, in Martin Luther King School, one of the child said, "You coming here is the biggest gift," right? That's exactly what Mrs. Budowsky refers to as a payback that we get for, for our services over here. It was overwhelming. At Malalo Park Elementary School, little children of first grade prepared a five-minute performance, an out-of-the-box performance, and that was so overwhelming. Every single reading specialist, thank you so much, all of you. You guys did a wonderful job, like President Schneider said. We were laid a red carpet when we reached out there, right? With cookies and water and, you know, whatnot, and the soda and juice, and, I mean, we don't need all that. All we wanted to do is go there and see the wonderful children in their classes, and how, and the wonderful teachers of the classes. They worked so hard during the entire reading, that they made sure every single child is paying attention to the books that we are reading. I read about, in almost all the classes, I read about Women's History Month, chose different books of women, like Malala Yousafzai, the Nobel Peace Prize winner, Susan B. Anthony, May Jameson, Emily Earhart, and it blended involved with the Women's History Month as well, because this month is Women's History Month as well. But this is a testament to our, the values of our students, our parents, our educators, the staff members, the reading specialists, who work so hard every day, go to the schools, put in so many efforts to pursue the academic excellence that we have here in the Township of Edison. But every single school principal, vice principals, reading specialists, teachers, educators, students, and their parents, what an energy it was. It was one of the best experiences, reading to those four hundred students at eleven elementary schools. And do not miss out Read Across America. Whoever gets an opportunity next year, do not miss out, and I'm sure Mrs. Budowsky will join us next year for that. And yesterday, Lincoln pajama night, that was awesome, there is, so Lincoln was one of the school that I did not visit in person for Read Across America, right? But they had an opportunity given to us yesterday, where we were allowed in person to, for the pajama night. So that makes it in person all the wonderful elementary schools. It's such a phenomenal experience. Thank you, everyone who did it. Thank you so much to all the schools.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Okay, public comments. I'm sorry, Mr. Venkat, I always forget to read my-
You can.
Yeah. Do you mind if I-
Sure, take your time.
I'm very sorry. All speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others whose legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it is not the board's intention to stifle comment on matters of legitimate concern to the school community, the public should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others under the law governing defamation or invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party. If speakers are uncertain of the legal ramifications of their comments, the board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their own legal advisor. Thank you so much, and sorry about that. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Doug, I have to contradict your statement, that you guys are working very hard. Look at the previous meetings and today's meeting. None of you guys are disciplined. We, as a parent, come here for six minutes, prepare what to talk. None of your board members are ready. If one guy is telling, or the other guy is telling, it's the Pandora's Box is open, or I don't have anything to talk, oh, sorry, I remember something. That shows lack of discipline on the board members to talk your time. We have been sitting here for more than three hours. You guys could have decided after our public comments, now you went there for two hours, coming back, talking about giving the lecture that this book is great, that book is great, oh, I forgot one thing, or I went there. See the lack of discipline. Please retrospect and watch the videos. I don't think you guys are working. You guys are politically divided. I think it's insane to see this undivided, no productivity board. This is the first time I'm seeing in the last four years. First three months, waste of time, in my view, number one. Number two, you are, I sent an email to Dr. Bragan, two weeks back, that don't spam my inbox, to help somebody who is running elections in September. Why only one committee emails are coming to the parents? Why can't it be published on the website? There are a lot of parents in my group ask me that, why this email is coming only to help certain board members? So I think, Dr. Bragan, I sincerely request, talk to your attorney, that why only one meeting is coming out of all the meetings? If that is the case, we don't get the caucus meeting invite, we don't get the regular meeting invite, why only the community relationship meeting? Please check. I don't want to be spammed. If not, then I'm going to bring a lot of parents here to protest that don't help these politicians to win the November elections. That is number one, that I want to call it. Number two, Doug, I have a respect for you as a good administrator, but your vice president has misbehaved continuously with Cristo, cutting him off not to talk, and instead of policy committee, I think you should remove this public relationship committee. I think, Mr. Brian, I told you, you wanted all the parents to come here. Look in this entire place. If you keep your administrators aside, staff, not even twenty, but that community relationship has thirty-five people joining, so means that community relationship is killing people not to come here, because we have to go through your drama here for three, four hours, so that community relationship is easy to go and ask the questions. So it means you, eight members don't work at all? Only the community relationship committee only works? It's a shame. Brian, you need to raise your voice that you want more parents to come to this meeting rather than the community relationship meeting. If there is a respect that I have one committee, that is Virginia White's committee, she's doing an awesome job, going to the liaison people, no politics, transparency, and showing an excellent job. an excellent job. I think, I hope people will learn from you, Virginia, sorry, but this is the only committee that I saw. Then the curriculum committee, Brian, you still have three months, four months, you take your time, but I still feel that the AB schedule is something that you need to pay attention, if you can invite parents, we are more happy to come in, we are, again, six months and six months, or three months, three months, there are problems. Before you guys approve it, because last week there are questions that Shannon asked, Dr. Bregan said that he will bring it next one, I don't know whether he responded to board members or not, but we are not comfortable with the AB schedule. Maybe there is a positivity from the teacher's side which we need to understand, but take an informed decision and inform the parents before you actually do it, because we don't want the situation that we get an email in June that, sorry guys, you have six months Spanish and six months music, we don't want a situation there. I hope you understand that. Please engage the parents, and I'm more happy to have the more, not 30, 300 parents will join and try to give the feedback to you. We can make that meeting successful. I think curriculum committee should have the community be participating, not the political committee, which is community committee in my view. And Dr. Bregan, from your school, John Adams School I would rate, even though I pay, I don't want to say the number, 70 grand for a private school my kid, John Adams beats those private schools at this moment. The teachers that I have in the maths, the Spanish teacher responds at nine o'clock, Ms. Finnegan, the Ms. Kramer actually prepping the students morning eight o'clock, are giving the homework, and the way that science, my kid is learning, some of the biology stuff, I see that John Adams Middle School standards are much more higher than the JP Stevens one. Is that a very, what you say, an arrogant statement? Maybe, but I feel your middle schools are performing well, JP students and parents are really worried, maybe EHS as well, let's focus on those APs, let's focus on those grades, let's focus on the placements. I think the testimonial is, how many kids goes to these schools with not having a citizen and all the stuff? I think a lot of parents are worried with the grades that are happening. And I think I'm not asking curriculum committee, Dr. Bregan, because you're doing a phenomenal job with your principals of both high schools. I want you to give an example, I'm not saying Woodrow Wilson is bad, but since my kid goes to John Adams, I personally feel it's an excellent school, Dr. Valentine, they're doing a great job. So please keep an eye on the high school, otherwise I have to pull my kid after the middle school to the private school again. I am not convinced to send my kid to the high school because I'm still concerned that our high school standards are, from the overcrowding to the teachings and everything, still concerning. The last but not least, Beryl, your friends are behaving well, and again, last week I started getting the call, spam calls. If you don't stop them.
Address the chair, please.
Through chair, your board member should stop engaging his mafia of India to make calls to the people and to provoke it. If they don't do it, I already inform the cops.
Your time, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I would like to address that. I, I have no idea and no knowledge about any mafia of India or anyone making a call on my behalf, like I have no knowledge of it. If anyone has any problem, then they can involve the Federal Bureau of Investigation and Central Intelligence Agency and investigate about me. If I am doing that, if I am involving anyone, if I have authorized anyone to make phone calls on my behalf, FBI and CIA will go after me, no problem.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Patel. Public comments, Ms. Joyce.
Joyia Freeman, I first would like to say Happy St. Patrick's Day to all my Irish friends.
Thank you.
You know, I love it when, you know, people need attention. But it was Women's History Month, and also, we're in Women's History Month, and in the school, reading to the kids felt really good to me, because I really liked that atmosphere in the school, different than the atmosphere I got myself into after school, after I retired from school. But when they're talking about displaying the art, and as I expressed that other times, we need to be more outstanding and more cultural when we do things, and that would bring more attention. More attention that we need to do our marketing better. Like we'll say, a lot of children have a lot of great art in the building, but nobody knows because there's no marketing. It's Women's History Month, there are women great artists, nobody knows, because we're not, we're spending too much time on foolishness, and we need to really get involved in more stuff that would help our kids and to make them understand different other people, so that they would not just be book educated, but also, they would also be culturally aware. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Sue Campione, HIF for Court. I just wanted to acknowledge and pay tribute and respect to Marissa Stryker. She lost her battle with cancer and was laid to rest today. Marissa was a graduate of JP Stevens High School and moved to the South Side and raised her children there. It was a tribute to her yesterday to see all the current principals for her children, former principals, retired principals, retired teachers, teachers who had left the district, current teachers, to come and pay tribute to her. She gave tireless hours to the children of Edison. She was, her and her husband ran the PTO at Lyndon Al for years, doing everything under the sun. She was involved with Cub Scouts, she was a band parent, had a full-time job, just even, you know, this last year with her struggle, really did anything that she could for the kids. And I just wanted to pay respects and a tribute to her because she really will be missed and was a very big, loving part of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, beautiful tribute.
Tony De Pasquale, two Pine Street. I was watching this meeting at home, and wasn't planning on coming tonight until I saw at nine o'clock that the board came out from their closed session. And then somebody sent me a screenshot of a communication from a resident, and it says this, at 8:40 PM, catch the times here, nine o'clock you came out, 8:40, a communication was put on a WhatsApp group that was screenshot and sent to me. And it says, "There seems to be a deadlock, four and four only, let's cross fingers." Now, how at 8:40 did somebody, a resident, know that during your closed session, that there was a deadlock, four and four, and they said, "Let's cross fingers"? Question I have, I'd like to just give this to you guys, whoever wants to come and get it.
You could leave it for us at the end.
Well, I'd rather not leave it here. I'd rather not.
We'll, we'll have one of our security guards grab it for us, please. Thank you. Just hold his time for a second. Mr. De Pasquale, you finished?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Mr. Ross, Menesh, you're next, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Ross, Principal Edison High School. I want to thank the board and for your time. Great to see all of the people come out to try to participate in the board, especially alumni from our school and from JP Stevens. Fantastic to see the dedication to excellence, all the people want to keep the work that you're doing going. Reason why I'm here today, like I said, number one, Happy St. Patrick's Day, but just want to bring light to some work that the staff and students of Edison Township are doing, not just Edison High School, but there's a drive, this weekend, on Saturday, there's going to be the St. Baldricks for charity where they shave people's heads. So there's an Edison School District, if you go to stbaldricks.com, you can donate money. Many different students and staff from the Edison School District are going to get their heads shaved, and the money goes to Children's Cancer Research. So there's an Edison Public Schools page, if you go on there and check it out, you know, it's a great way to support. We all know how devastating this can be to any community. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Menesh Patel, 241 Menf. First of all, happy belated birthday, Shiri. Well, we didn't know when you announced this, we all know now, so we could wish you after the, after the meeting. Well, you guys doing a great job, but Mr. Beryl just says he's got announcement next week. So I'm hoping that you guys did your budget meeting and you're not shortchanging my 240 kids out of music money. Hoping that you do 100% of it. I'm sure my lower buddy might not agree with me, but we need that money for the kids to win every program that we do out of this goal. The other thing I would suggest is, we keep talking that Edison is coming up, and Mohin just did a very good question, what are we doing with JP? Between the two schools, I think JP needs to be renovated first before Edison. I'm not playing the game of South versus North, but this school has more problems than Edison School. And I think the board should think about it, that let's work on JP first before Edison bids. Because I know that last board did North-South, but if you ask the principal, especially one of the ex-principals sitting here, Ms. P., this school needs better renovation faster, it has problems, Edison's still not there yet. When you're talking about problems, if you say JP's got 100, Edison is about 75 to 79. So we need to do JP first and Edison last. I know, Doug, you're smiling, yes, JP's in my heart, but I'm not doing it because of that. When I talk for kids, both side of the kids are mine. Because when you, if you ever want to see my phone, I'll let you have it for a day. And when the kid sends me messages, I get it from Edison too, and so is JP, because now Edison kids know that Meneshankal is fighting for us too. So those kids from music also send me messages, so I'm fighting for both. I'm not fighting for one, but JP needs renovation faster and more rooms faster. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Any other public comment?
President, can I address?
Mr. Baker?
Real quick.
Yes, Mr. Mohin Patel.
Sure. I agree with him, 100%, Mr. Patel. All our schools need help, but JP definitely needs more help right now, faster for, when I said that, it didn't mean that I favor one school over the other, I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows that. All the schools, all 19 schools, all 17,000 students mean a role to me, and this school definitely needs the help the most. We should start from here and go towards everything else. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Baker.
Evening all, Brett Baker, 140 Grandview Avenue. I didn't intend to speak, just at risk of extending this meeting any longer, unlike you all, I haven't eaten dinner yet. But I'd be remiss, I think Mr. Ross left, for nothing else for this to be publicly shared. I had a really cool opportunity with one of my students the other day to ask him, where are you going to high school? I work in Newark, proudly worked there for 14 years, and told me he's going to Edison. And I said, "No shit? Where are you going?"
Easy, easy.
I've got no problem saying what I said, Doug. He said he's going to Edison High School. And I said, "If there's no better place to go to, it's in Edison High School." No offense, JP's great too. But I've seen time and time again, Mr. Ross prove over and over again that I've never met an educator care more about his kids. Phenomenally, heard his name, a true school administrator. So I came up to Mr. Ross this evening and told him this, said, "You're going to get a great kid, his name's RJ. Heart of gold, brain smarter than I've ever seen." And what I want to make sure this community knows is that Mr. Ross, and probably every other administrator in this district, what Mr. Ross offered to do is set up a time with RJ and his family, to take a private tour of Edison High School at the end of the summer, help him through his scheduling. And Mr. Ross said, "I would do that for every kid who comes from out of district." Mr. Ross, I, you seem to have left again, as another school administrator, we do it all the time, but.
He's shy, he's shy, so he hides behind the door.
I just, I've been proudly doing this work for 14 years. I love my kids immensely. All approximately 1,762 that have crossed my path. I love their parents immensely, all 3,417, yeah, I've done the math. And the scariest thing every time, because I've always worked in elementary school or middle school, is when they transition into the next phase. And I'm just grateful Mr. Ross exists. I'm grateful. I'm grateful we've got school leaders across this district that care about our kids. We got teachers that work their tails off night and day. So I don't care what happened the last two hours. And I'm glad you guys had fun at Read Across America Day, because as a teacher, I loved having it too. But I just want to remind you guys, you work for the kids, you work for the families, you work for the staff. I want to just keep that in mind, and just remember, we've got some really, really, really great people working here. And whatever divides you guys certainly is not as strong as what unites you. Maybe get out of your way and help Mr. Ross be great, help JP be great. Because three years ago, I joined the overcrowding task force, and we're still having the same debate. So a kid was a freshman in high school, when we were debating what we do with JP and what do we do with Edison High School, and the kid's about to graduate. My son starts kindergarten in a year, he's going to join full-day kindergarten, and I will, I'll watch my mouth, I'll be danged if he graduates from Edison High School and we still haven't solved this problem. Come on. Solve it, figure it out. But most of all, I just wanted to come here and say thanks to Mr. Ross. Because what he does, time and time again, is prove what educators across this country and in the city do, which is care deeply. And I use educators broadly, I've talked to Ms. White about this, it's not just the teachers in the classroom, it's the people who answer the phone, it's the people who cross kids at the streets, it's the school bus drivers, it's Dr. Bregan, it's his team, it's his entire cabinet that's still here, which is phenomenal. This doesn't have to happen this way, whatever happened. And, yeah, just want to say thanks, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Any other public comments?
Well, President?
Yes, Mr. She.
Mr. Baker, I can guarantee you, when your kids get to a high school, it's totally going to be different.
Guarantee is a strong word. Okay, very good. We're going to move to, we're, we're going to close public comments now, and we are going to adjourn to a privileged session in that, after that, we are not going to be coming out to vote, we're going to adjourn the full meeting from privileged session. So Ms. Cluck?
Whereas, Section 8 of the Open Public Meanings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas, this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Edison, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey as follows. The public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows. Attorney-client privileged discussion regarding student matters, litigation brought by former employees and students, ETA grievances, perk, unfair labor practices, and personnel matters. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matter shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. She motions to adjourn to a privileged session.
Motion.
Mr. Patel, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays?
Motion passes.
Thank you. We will be adjourning from privileged session. Thank you.